I will now call it September 4th, 2018. Blue Springs City Council meeting in order. If you would stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and I will lead you into the place of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Want to welcome you in attendance, as well as those that might watch it on YouTube later. Next we have the consent agenda unless their items need to be pulled, except a motion for approval.
Send me.
There are seconds. Second. Pause there was. Okay, roll call please.
Councilmember Kayler.
Aye.
Levise.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Cole Pepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Chair unanimously.
Next we have a public hearing on fiscal 2018-2020 budget.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. City council information form dated August 26, 2019, including notice, public hearing published in the Examiner on August 16, 2019, budget in brief, and bill number 4690 adopting fiscal year 2018-20 budget. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Thank you. We will now go to our Assistant City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. The proposed budget is $78,371,031, which is an increase over the adopted fiscal year 2018-19 budget by 8.4 million, or 12 percent. The budget presented to you tonight has been increased by 800,000 from the budget that was submitted to the council on August 1st. This change was discussed at the August 22 budget work session and is included in order to complete the golf cart path improvements in one year. The general fund budget itself is projected to decrease by $180,730, or 0.66 percent, to $27,000, $27.4 million due to a projected decrease in sales and franchise taxes. To offset the decrease in revenues, overall expenditures in the general fund were also cut by $180,000. All categories of operating expenditures increased slightly while capital outlay was reduced by 55 percent. At the conclusion of the current fiscal year, the council will be asked to amend the budget to increase the capital outlay budget for the next fiscal year based upon the balance available in unassigned fund balance. The goal of amending the capital outlay budget next year will be to increase the budget to the same amount that was adopted in the 2018-2019 budget of 775,400. This approach was taken in order to minimize further reductions in operations to the general fund. The areas of the general fund expenditure budget that are increasing include health insurance, workers' compensation, utilities, and employee raises. Other cost-cutting measures for the general fund include the reduction of four full-time positions, which included the Assistant to the City Administrator, Public Works Engineering Technician, Economic Development Coordinator, and Parks and Recreation Marketing Coordinator. The total full-time employees are now reduced to 309.5. Other significant areas of the budget include the water and sewer utility funds that are budgeted at 12.1 million, debt service that is budgeted at 14.3 million, and the capital improvements budget at 19.9 million. The capital improvements budget is consistent with the plan adopted by the council on May 20th and includes funding for the street pavement maintenance program at 2.5 million. It continues the third full year of funding for parks to for maintenance projects at 4.7 million, which includes the golf course cart paths and Wilbury Young Park renovations. It allocates 372,000 for the fourth year of the sidewalk maintenance program and includes 7.6 million for water and sewer system improvements. More details about the proposed budget can be found in the attachments to this meeting agenda on the city's website and on file in the administration office at City Hall. A special note regarding revenues, the property tax levy for the city will be set at a special council meeting on September 23rd at 5:30 in this room. And that will be done once we get the final certification from the county on the assessed valuations at the conclusion of the board of equalization. Those are all the comments I have to offer on the budget.
Were there any questions from the council? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. Is there any one in order, just like speaking support up? Support up. Opposition two? Opposition two? Close this public hearing. We will have the introduction and first reading of bill 4690 only, with the second reading coming on the 16th. Introduce it.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of bill number 4690, an ordinance approving, adopting, and appropriating the annual operating and capital budgets of the city of Blue Springs, Missouri, for the fiscal year October 1, 2019 through September 30, 2020.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading only tonight.
Okay.
Second.
There's a second and a discussion. Councilman Levise.
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to address tonight something we had a lot of discussion about at the work session, the budget work session last week. We had a lot of discussion about the loggers retirement system for employees, about moving this from L7 to L6. And there were two kind of main points of discussion I heard that night. One of it was a lot of talk about the police department. I think Mr. Johnson mentioned the FOP contract several times, and I think that's an effort by some to kind of indicate that the only reason we're doing this is for the police officers. But here's what I know. I know last year, if you look at our human resources report, it showed we had 12 resignations from the police department, but we had just as many from parks and public works. If you combine those numbers, I think it was 11 that we lost. And that's not retirements, that's not firings, that's resignations of people that have went somewhere else to work another location. The year before that, we had more resignations in public works than anywhere else. And so I think each time Councilmember Edmondson and myself have talked about this, we've, the discussion has always been that this is for all employees. I think of our former city engineer and former senior planning staff who went to work for Liberty in very similar positions, but they still live here in town, they still go to church here and interact with the community. So unless Liberty's just shelling out salary dollars and it's those intangibles like the retirement, and I think healthcare will have to address, and we've already started, those are the things that we need to at least be competitive with our region. The other thing I heard a lot about was talk about the money, talk about how we're going to pay for this. The number that we've been given by staff is about $600,000 to move us from L7 to L6 with the contribution. And conversations we've had with Mr. Johnson in the past, he's indicated that it would be likely, and I would agree, that we would probably stop the 401K contributions, the 3 percent match, largely because the L6 would make up for those differences, and if we're at the contribution level, nobody's going to want to do another 3 percent on top of that. That number right now is at $300,000. So if we stop that match, we're already cutting the number in half. The number is really 300,000 is what we're looking to, to get from L7 to L6. And so from there, you can go lots of different directions, but I think the two that are most worth mentioning, in this year's budget, in order to make up for a shortfall, Ms. Cates did, I think, the hardest thing there is to do, and went through our budget to try to find some efficiencies. And she found, I think it was $253,000 to help us make up that shortfall. So, you know, that's kind of, that's the way you don't usually want to go, that's counting pencils in the park department and color copies and planning. But if we're trying to prioritize something, the money is there in just efficiencies that we can get to. But I think we don't want to go that route because that's pinching pennies and that's putting departments in difficulty. So I think the logical thing is to look at that unassigned fund balance. Last year, or this year, it's $400,000. Aside from the year that we zeroed it out to pay for City Hall renovations, it's actually usually been a million dollars or more. It's 1.7, 2.6, 1.2. So, and then before that, it just says we have a positive fund balance, doesn't give us the numbers about a decade ago, we weren't reporting that number. So what all that means is, the money has been there in our existing budget for at least the last decade to go from L7 to L6 if we had just prioritized it. That's without reducing a single service, without reducing a single program, we can even this year get to L6 if we wanted to. And so I think based on the discussion last week at the work session, those votes aren't there. Even if they were, I think Councilmember Edmondson mentioned that there's a process to that, there's a public process, you have the 45 days, you have to do notification, we have to do certain things to get there, so we couldn't get there by October 1st if we wanted to. Plus, I've heard that I think staff is working on a plan to get us to L6 without the contribution in the next couple of years. And I give Councilmember Edmondson a lot of credit for that because he's helped move this conversation from never going to happen, we can't get there in Blue Springs, to now we're talking about when and how. And so I think we should at least support that effort. So I'm going to make the motion that we move $300,000 from the unassigned fund balance into our loggers fund. We don't have to earmark it or anything, we'll just leave it there. If the revenue projections come in and we get that money, then that makes that conversation next year a lot easier. If they don't come in, then we're in a no worse off situation than we are now. But I think that that kind of relieves some of the tension in this conversation. So I make the motion, we move 300,000 from the unassigned fund balance to our loggers fund, and look forward to any other comments.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Levise and group, my understanding when we were at the budget meeting was that we had requested staff to look into this, give us numbers, give us figures to see what those actually were. I was out of town this weekend, I was not aware that we were presented with those, so I assume you're kind of talking off of your sleeve a little bit?
No, we've had, we've had those.
What we asked for, what we asked for at the meeting was a presentation, so I'm waiting for that. Secondly, I think it's clear that when we're talking loggers, we're talking retirement. And retirement doesn't put money in your pocket to pay healthcare, which you mentioned. It doesn't buy groceries. It also feeds the coffers, if you will, of the higher-paid employees and all the elected employees, or all the elected officials in Blue Springs. So I think that's something we need to note as well. If you were saying, hey, let's earmark money so we can give raises to the lowest-paid people in the city, then I would probably say, hey, that's cool, let's figure out if we can really do that. But to me, this is an ill-designed plan unless I can see the numbers that I thought we had requested that they work up so we could talk about it more as a proposal, as a, put it over here and earmark something.
Okay. Councilman Levis.
Yes, first off, I think it's inappropriate to say that there's no support for increasing retirement or raises, that's not accurate. What I believe, which Councilman Erickson stated, we have asked for those hard numbers, and I said, it stated at the work session, I've seen those numbers, but I want to see them again, and I want to see them as today's numbers and how they fall out. You talk about people who have left. Have we had exit interviews where they said, we're leaving because you're not paying me enough? Did they leave because you don't have enough retirement? I have not seen that, I haven't seen any exit interviews. So for me to make a judgment call on something I don't have in front of me would be very, very difficult. I am all for increases in salary, and I think that we need to have those numbers, hard numbers. I have asked for those at the work session, and once we have those, the budget can be amended to accommodate.
Anyone else? Councilman Fowler, then, we'll come back to you.
Yes, Your Honor. Yeah, the $600,000 is an annual, it's not just a one-time deal, and taking money out of reserves, yeah, that's pretty, that's something that's short-term, it gets money going already. But I guess I would also have to say that, I've been talking about this with staff for a few years now, and talked to Administrator Johnson, and we certainly, staff has been on that path, heading that direction, just like all the other things that have been added over the years, all the improvements, they, we talk about them years in advance, and then they come forth, and I believe the staff is on that path. And so, I, it's going to happen, it's just a matter of when. So I'm not prepared to make that move of uncommitted funds this evening for a one-time deal.
Councilman Levise?
Well, so this isn't reserve funds, this would be reducing the 300,000 from the match, so it's still retirement, it's not moving money from somewhere else to somewhere else, meaning from retirement A to retirement B. Councilmember Cole Pepper mentions numbers, we've had this conversation for several years, the most recent numbers were given a couple months ago, they're hard numbers of 600,000 for moving to L6 contribution, I think it's 1.2, 1.1 to move to L6 non-contribution. And Councilmember Erickson, we can have salary conversations throughout the year, this is what is difficult for those long-term employees, those higher-paid employees, they're the ones worried about retirement. And if we want those lower-paid employees to stick around and to become long-term higher-paid employees, we need things like this that's going to keep them in the seats, rather than, yes, we don't have exit interviews that tell us that retirement is the main reason they left, but when 10 percent of your workforce is turning over every year, I think that's something to be looking at. Salaries is one thing, healthcare is another, retirement's another. We've addressed salaries on some levels, we still need to do that. Healthcare's going up for everybody, we still need to do that. But we can do this, and we can do this this year, and we could have done it every year for the last decade. This is consistent, sustainable dollars without affecting services, which is what everybody asked for at the work session, and we've had those numbers. So I think this is a sound, fiscally responsible way to just relieve the conversation. We're not even saying we're starting the program, we're just moving some dollars, so that way next year when we have this conversation, we already have a step down the line, we've moved the football a little bit.
Any other comments before I call for a vote? Seeing none, we're going to roll call this amendment by Councilmember Levise.
And to clarify, just to make sure I've got the motion correct, that we are, the motion is to move $300,000 from the unassigned fund balance to the loggers fund.
Yes, that's correct.
Correct. All right. And so we've got a motion and a second. Councilmember Levise?
Aye.
Fowler?
No.
Erickson?
No.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Cole Pepper?
No.
Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
No.
Motion fails with a vote of four to three.
Now, we will go to the original motion is to approve the first reading, with the second reading of bill number 4690 being at the meeting on the 16th. We had a motion and a second for a discussion. Councilmember Fowler.
As I recall this past year relative to wage increases, could staff, help me, what was the average rate of increases in the police department across officers?
Yeah, the collective bargaining units had 2.5 percent step increases, but to get them in the proper step for where they are, the rate, the increases were generally higher than that. And I don't have the range of increases, but it was anywhere from 2.5 percent up to sometimes 8 to 10 percent to get them in the proper step for the first year of the step plan. The rest of the employees that are not in bargaining units got an average of 2 percent.
Just to clarify then, so you're saying that there were some employees that got 8 percent raises in order to get them on that step?
That's correct. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Kayler.
Clarify, the step program is only for the FOP, correct?
That's correct.
So we still haven't addressed anything for the rest of the employees, it's just for the FOP, for the FOP agreement?
They're the only ones covered by an agreement. We have done other things as we fill new positions or positions turn over, or if there's an issue in a particular position or category, we address those as they come up, and not, not as a whole unit at once.
Okay. And if, you want to go ahead and rock?
Yeah.
Whoever wants to go first.
Yeah, I guess I'd say to staff, I appreciate staff putting all the hundreds of hours into the budget each year, and I look forward to the time when the staff says that it's fiscally responsible to move forward with loggers. And I think when, when we can get staff to that point, I think we'll probably all be in agreement.
Your Honor.
Go ahead. It's like a tennis match, isn't it?
You're about to break my neck.
Sorry about that. Since, because of the budget meeting we had, and I kind of started that off like we were talking about, it, this process and Councilmember Erickson, I think we'll learn as we go along, and I'm saying if you don't know, but you'll pick up on it, a lot of the things we do on the budgets has to be done year, two years, three years down the road to get to a point where they get enacted. And that's the reason why we started, or why I started pushing on some of this, and why, as Councilman Fowler had pointed out, it has been a discussion for a number of years. And it's good to see that we're starting to see a uniform voice come across to staff. I don't think anybody's trying to force something down staff's throat, but I think we are trying to get them to understand that this is important and important to the city as a large, and get going down that road. And in one answer to Susan's asking for interview or exit interviews, I'm not sure that we as a council are privy to that information. So if we are, I guess that's great, but I don't know if we are privy to that because that's not under our privy, I believe. It goes more towards staff and staff to mayor, and then mayor to us, if I'm not mistaken.
That's, that's correct, and we don't have a formal exit interview process currently, but one of the contracts that we've just signed as part of our Mark Shared Services is to do an exit interview process that will be managed by Mark, so it'll be completely anonymous. And so we'll have data that specifically says the reasons people leave, what their complaints or issues are, the way that that's structured. So that's going to start within the next month, where we'll actually start that process. And we wouldn't have detailed data down to the individual level, but we would know, like position or department type.
You could see trends and that type of thing.
And we would include that information in the HR report going forward.
So that'll be good for us to look and see.
It's good to know.
Okay.
Your Honor, I just want to say, that's all we need. I don't, I don't need to know that Johnny Smith said, this is terrible. I just need to know that we had, if we had 10 percent turnover, 1 percent was for this, 3 percent was for that, so that we have some way to gauge. And I'm, and as Chris said, you know, we, Councilman Levise said, yes, I've had numbers on this logger deal, but I asked at the council, at the budget meeting to have him, I want to sit down with nothing and talk about nothing but those numbers. I don't, we didn't discuss that in detail in the, in the budget review that we had the other day. What we talked about was the entire budget in, pretty much in generalities. So I want to see those numbers, and I want to sit down and be able to talk about nothing else but those numbers, because that to me is the only thing I can hang my hat on.
Okay.
Your Honor.
Okay.
I thought we were done with that discussion, so I guess we're still on the same discussion. I get that. I wanted to be real clear that I'm not against anything that we can give anybody in this community, whether it's a better road, or a better salary, or better retirement. And I get it, I haven't been on the council very long, but I do have a degree in math, and I do understand numbers like Councilmember Cole Pepper does. But what I want to see is, I want to see a what-if from 20 years ago going forward to today, and what-if from today going forward 20 years, based upon the projections of income, revenues, and tax dollar losses that we can project in a graphical fashion and see what this will do to Blue Springs. I care about tomorrow, but I also care about tomorrow's tomorrow.
Okay, now, before we take a vote, everybody's been talking, I haven't gotten my two cents worth yet. If we had unlimited money, this wouldn't even be an issue. That's not the case today, it wasn't the case yesterday, and it won't be the case tomorrow. Now, I can tell you how we can help get that done, because we're losing revenue in our court system because of some actions taken at the state level, and also actions taken by the Missouri Supreme Court. It's reduced our revenue in those areas. Another area, I don't think there's a day goes by that I don't see a FedEx or UPS truck running down my street, tearing up the street first of all, and we're not collecting one penny on those products being delivered to those houses. We're going to have to pass a use tax that failed because people were confused that they would be double taxed. They thought they were paying a sales tax, and also you're going to ask me for a use tax? No, that's convoluted language the state has put in, because basically you paying the same tax as you would if you went over here at Adams Dairy Landing and bought the same product. We're losing revenue, more and more people are going to buy online, we're going to continue to see that number increase in lost revenue that the city is not getting. So I think if we just kind of capture those dollars some kind of way, it would put us on the road to being able to do some of the things we're having a discussion about tonight. Food for thought, folks. I'm going to get thoughts to ponder later, but this is food for thought. Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries, and the second reading will be on the 16th. Let's move on to the next item, which is a public hearing on the amendment to the Unified Development Code relating to medical marijuana.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. City council information form dated August 27, 2019, including the Planning Commission staff report, including the affidavit of publication in the Examiner on August 10, 2019, the UDC text amendment application form, bill number 4691, amending the Unified Development Code. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Okay, all right, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council, this is a public hearing held.
You want to turn your mic on? We're not getting anything over here.
Is this good now? There we go. Sorry. Public hearing is being held at the request of the city for amendments to the Unified Development Code, specifically Sections 405, 050A34 under medical marijuana dispensary, Section 405, 050A35, medical marijuana cultivation facility, Section 405, 050A36, medical marijuana testing facility, Section 405, 050837, medical marijuana infused products manufacturing facility, Section 405, 050838, medical marijuana uses, and Section 405, 050839, medical marijuana transportation facility. These amendments will clarify the measurement methods and separation distances for medical marijuana facilities as they relate to schools, churches, and daycares. As you are aware, the city council adopted ordinance 4839 on July 15, 2019, with the intent to mirror the state's emergency rules that were published on July 1 of 2019. That approved ordinance did not contain specific and necessary language related to the measurement methods for instances in which a church, school, or daycare is part of a larger facility such as an office building or a strip center. And that was an error on staff, and that language we had talked about throughout the process, but that language didn't make it into the ordinance that we brought forward to you. Staff recognized that error and is now bringing it back before you this evening so that we are in compliance with the state's emergency rules. Specifically, what happened in these instances is if the, a church, or school, or daycare is part of a larger structure such as an office building or a strip mall, then the distance between the medical marijuana facility and that church, school, or daycare is measured to the entrance of the church, school, or daycare in that larger building. In instances, when it's a freestanding church, you measure to the property line, or a freestanding school, church, or daycare, you measure to the property line of the church, school, or daycare. So that's a pretty necessary change that staff feels we need to make in order to be in compliance with the state rules. So that would apply to both instances when a medical marijuana facility is freestanding, as well as when a medical marijuana facility is also part of a strip mall or office building. So we're just kind of making that clarification for those instances when the church is not a freestanding facility. Finally, the amendments add a very important word in which that was added in between the proposed rules and the emergency rules when published, is that measurements should be made or shall be made along the shortest path between demarcation points that can lawfully be traveled by foot. The previous version of the state rules did not have the word "lawfully" contained in there, and the final rules did, and so we feel that that's an important clarification to make and add to our code amendment, or our UDC as well. The Development Advisory Commission reviewed these changes on August 19th, the Planning Commission reviewed these on August 26th, and both groups recommended approval of the language as proposed unanimously before you this evening. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mike? The councils?
Excuse me, I have a question, and I think you know what it is. Have we determined what lawfully is, and who's going to determine what lawfully is?
Lawfully is any means that is travelable where you're not breaking the law. And so we, after conversations that, between councilmembers and staff, and the councilmembers, and the State Department of Health and Senior Services, the state is going to be measuring those and making those determinations based upon the information submitted as part of the applications to the state. So the state, the state of Missouri, will be making all of those determinations and reviewing all of the measurement distances as part of their application process. And then if approved, a business would come to the city for a business license and then provide evidence that they have been awarded a license to the state before they could get a business license to operate in the city. get a business license to operate in the city.
Can I ask council one question? Do we, do we need to say lawfully as determined by the state, or does it stand alone the way it is? Does that need to be in there?
I believe this is just, it's the same language that's in the regulations, correct?
This is the same language that is in the state's emergency rules, yes.
And that's what we've used in our amendments and our codes so far, so I think we just want to mirror what's in the regulations.
Cool.
Your... Councilmember Levesey?
So just to clarify, based on what Councilmember Erickson's talking about, and I know this is an ever-changing process, so before, the city had to certify that the location the applicant wanted to locate fit our ordinances and codes when they made their application to the state. So now you're saying, we certify nothing, the state certifies that it meets our codes and ordinances, and then they come to us for just general code approval that we would give to any other business?
Not exactly, this, we, as part of the process, when we adopted the, the distance measurements and things of that nature, we looked at what other cities were going to do, and some cities were going to actually go out and field measure distances, they were going to charge a fee for that, and, or do it through Google Maps and things like that. As a policy, staff took at the opposite tact and said, we don't want to be in the business of trying to measure these out for applicants. The state rules said nothing along the lines that an applicant had to have proof from a city that showed that they met the distance requirements, it just said they had to prove to the state and affirm to the state that they met the distance. So, staff never really had the intent to, or intention of going out and measuring these or confirming these, so this is actually just confirming what staff was already going to be doing.
So can the city contest that if they get an application, the states, I mean, who knows what the state bureaucracy is, they rubber stamp and say this meets it, can we contest it and say, we don't feel this meets our measurement distances? I mean, I guess if we're not going to go out and check it, then how would we know that even?
I believe that there is an option for us to, to contest it, or to disagree with the state's measurements. I, to be honest, I think it would have to be something that would be pretty egregious, and somebody would have to have, had missed a church or school in their measurements, and so I think at that point, we could, you know, alert the state.
Likely, we're going to know better where our schools and daycares are than the state, so maybe that could happen.
It could happen, it's unlikely, but it could happen.
Okay, all right, thank you.
What else? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. And one orders like speaking, support of, support of, opposition two, opposition two. Close this public hearing, who would like to introduce Bill 4691. Okay.
First reading of, first reading of Bill Number 4691, an ordinance amending Sections 405, 050A34, Medical Marijuana Dispensary, Section 405, 050A35, Medical Marijuana Cultivation Facility, Section 405, 050A36, Medical Marijuana Testing Facility, Section 405, 050A37, Medical Marijuana Infused Product, Products Manufacturing Facility, Section 405, 050A38, Medical Marijuana Uses, and Sections 405, 050A39, Medical Marijuana Transportation Facility of the Unified Development Code of the City, of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Blue Springs to clarify the measurement methods and separation distances for medical marijuana facilities.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading, and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign.
Second reading of Bill Number 4691, an ordinance amending Sections 405, 050A34, Medical Marijuana Dispensary, Section 405, 050A35, Medical Marijuana Cultivation Facility, Section 405, 050A36, Medical Marijuana Testing Facility, Section 405, 050A37, Medical Marijuana Infused Products Manufacturing Facility, Section 405, 050A38, Medical Marijuana Uses, and Section 405, 050A39, Medical Marijuana Transportation Facility of the Unified Development Code of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Blue Springs to clarify the measurement methods and transportation, or I'm sorry, separation distances for medical marijuana facilities.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its second and final reading, and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call, please.
Councilmember Levesey?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance Number 4848.
Next we have a public hearing, the amendment to the Downtown Development Code to adopt an appeal process for decisions of the Downtown Review Board.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter to the record. City Council information form dated August 27, 2019, including affidavit of publication in the examiner on August 10, 2019, UDC text amendment application, and Bill Number 4692 amending the Unified Development Code. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. This is an amendment to Section 404, 240 of the Unified Development Code, which is also known as the Downtown Development Code. The Downtown Development Code regulates the development of property and construction of certain structures in the downtown zoning district, as well as provides the process for applications to follow within the downtown zoning district. Currently, for proposed projects that comply with all requirements of the Downtown Development Code and the Unified Development Code, the Downtown Review Board serves as the final decision-making body, and either approves or denies an application. This amendment would add an appeals process for that decision in which the Downtown Review Board is the final decision-maker, and that appeal process would go directly to the City Council, and would follow the same appeals process, how to instigate an appeal, as is contained in the code for other applications in which there is an appeal body. So, all we're doing is adding the City Council as the appeals body for Downtown Review Board decision-making, or decisions, excuse me. These proposed amendments were reviewed by the Downtown Review Board on August 12, and they voted unanimously to recommend approval. The Development Advisory Commission met on August 19 and recommended approval unanimously as well, and the Planning Commission met on August 26 and recommended approval of these amendments before you unanimously. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none, go to the public. And one orders like speaking, support of, support of, opposition two, opposition two. Close the public hearing, who would like to introduce Bill 4692.
I'll introduce, Your Honor. First reading of...
First reading of Bill Number 4692, an ordinance amending Section 402, 240M, Downtown Development Code of the Unified Development Code of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Blue Springs to adopt an appeal process for decisions of the Downtown Review Board.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading, and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign.
Second reading of Bill Number 4692, an ordinance amending Section 404, 240M, Downtown Development Code of the Unified Development Code of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Blue Springs to adopt an appeal process for decisions of the Downtown Review Board.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its second and final reading, and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmember Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance Number 4849.
Next we're going to go to a Merrill announcements, I'm not going to do a thoughts to ponder tonight, but we want to recognize the person that, a videographer among many other things, the sound man in the booth back there, has a birthday today, and so I'd say, happy birthday to the hands of soul. Your Honor? Yes.
Did he bring us any cupcakes?
I have, I have yet...
Or muffins?
I have yet to receive one of those.
Where are they, David? Yeah, me neither.
But that's okay, I'm sure it's kind of have. If we have not embarrassed him yet, I'm sure we will continue to embarrass him until we all have a taste of those muffins.
I would second that.
Okay, I'm going to go to a message that I posted on Facebook. We are forever grateful for the outpouring of love and support shown by so many people with the passing of First Lady Eloise Ross. Although she is no longer with us in body, her spirit will forever remain in our hearts with heartfelt gratitude and appreciation, Mayor Carson Ralston family with the passing of First Lady. She was laid to rest yesterday in the Veteran Cemetery in Higginsville, and I want to thank Councilmember Kayler for being there yesterday, as we did that committal service. Don't have any visitors appearance forms, so we're going to go to our city attorney for a message that someone will so move.
Your Honor, at this time, the appropriate motion would be to move that this public body go into closed session pursuant to Section 610, 021, Subparagraph 2, Revised Statutes of Missouri Concerning Real Estate for the Purpose of Privileged Communications Between a Governmental Body or Its Representative and Legal Counsel, and that any minutes, documents, and other records discussed or taken during the closed session remain closed, and that this body stand adjourned at the completion of such session.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levesey?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
The council is going to be dismissed to the Executive Council Conference Room. That was a mouthful.
Two distancing...
Yeah.